Twenty-six, twenty-six regular session of the 20th City Council is now called to order. Please rise in vocation by Honorable Councillor Romeo Calizo followed by the singing of the National Anthem then Kageyan de Oro March.
Let us all put ourselves under the guidance of the Almighty Lord. In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Almighty Father, we thank you for again giving opportunity for the members of the 20th City Council to meet minds and engage in brainstorming, to come up with concepts that are best fitted to address the needs of our city and our people. We pray for an atmosphere of peace, harmony and cooperation as we tackle issues affecting governance. We need your guidance so that we can continue moving on with our strengths and bridge gaps that we identify. Keep us stay meek and patient as we work with our colleagues in government, stakeholders and all who need our service. All this we ask oh Lord in prayer, amen. In the name of the Father and of the Son and of the Holy Spirit.
Please be seated. Good afternoon ladies and gentlemen. Good afternoon councilors, good afternoon our friends from media, our televiewers and our visitors who are here today. May Hapon tomorrow is the birthday of Councillor Romeo Calizo. May I request Councillor Uma delete next pa. Ah okay, ako na nag-iplano next Monday. Oh para Monday na. Ah okay, ah so una sa sikuan si Councillor Romeo Calizo to be led by Councillor Michael Seno. Na uma na ba kawak pa? Ay pagpataka. Wala. Wala pa, wala pa. Bita, uma na bita, kawak wala pa. Uma na, okay. Councillor Aimi Moreno, wala pa no? Yes, okay, please lead the singing, Councillor Aimi. Manindok man ta ato, let's stand, no? And sing the happy birthday song.
Mayong hapon vice pero but it's not the birthday of Honorable Calizo. Kaya if I, no, August man siya, kaya parayas man may August.
I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. I'm so sorry, ako to sayop, ako sayop. Councillor Roger Abadai. Then Councillor Aimi Moreno is going to lead the singing, okay. Paliwag tindog.
So next year, next week pa?
Ah tomorrow lagi.
So next week pa siguro?
Right, tomorrow?
Delete man, kaya karoon man namang gusto manganta. Okay, paliwag ko tindog.
May I request everyone to please stand so that we can sing a happy birthday? Okay, so happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, happy birthday, happy birthday to you.
Faster.
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, happy birthday, happy birthday to you. Happy birthday Councillor.
Happy birthday Councillor Roger Abadai. Okay. Next trick pang ditson. Okay. Okay. Okay, Mr. Secretary, please do the roll call.
Honorable Joseline B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer for the First District Councilors, Honorable Agapito E. Roberto G. Swan, Honorable Roger G. Abadai, Honorable J.R. Pasqual, Honorable Aimi Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo V. Calizo, Honorable George S. Go King, Honorable Jose P.P.S. Abu Junior, Honorable Malvern E. Esparcia. For the Second District Councilors, Honorable Ivona Yasini B. Imano, Honorable Maria Lourdes Isgaani, Honorable Jolene Mercedes El Balaba, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ian Mark Nakaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Suset G. Magtahas Daba. For the ex-official members, Honorable Yan Lam S. Lim, Liga ng mga barangay President, and Honorable John Michael Elseno, City Escape Federation President. There is Corom, Madam Presiding Officer.
Corom is hereby certified. Majority Floor Leader, Councillor Ian Mark Nakaya, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Joseline Bebota B. Rodriguez. Morag, there's one pole standing between the Presiding Officer and the Floor Leader, may we have adjustment?
I cannot see, I cannot see his face and his eyes.
It should be clearer than crystal, Madam Presiding Officer. That's why I complain.
Thank you.
Di kitu mo tindog si Councillor Roger, kaya nagmae ito, kaya imagine iyang body ang i-greet lugar ni Councillor Moreno. May galit, may correction sa traffic. Anyway, answer to, Councillor Malvern?
Anyway, happy birthday, Councillor Roger Abadai. Litson apod. Then to our friends from the media, Felo Kageyanon, Smeng Hapon. I move Madam Presiding Officer to dispense with the reading of the minutes of meeting on January 30, 2023 and to consider the furnishing of its capital if remembered as the reading itself.
In a second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
I likewise move for the approval of said minutes of meeting.
Second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
There are two members who would like to render their respective special reports, Madam Presiding Officer. First is Councillor Malvern Esparcia as regards the request of the public that there should be a Food Panda hub in Kageyan de Oro City. He will explain the intention of his special report and this representation would like to report on the matter of the animal care in Kageyan de Oro. I would like to render a report on that matter, Madam Presiding Officer. So Councillor Esparcia first and this representation next.
Councillor Bernie Esparcia, you recognize?
Mayong nga hapon, Madam Chair, thank you to Councillor, Majority Floor Leader, Ian Mark Nakaya. Sa atong mga kauban, kuya Roger, happy birthday. And more birthdays to come. Usatanan mga kauban ato sa media, mayong nga hapon. Madam Chair, my special report is all about the concern of our riders especially sa Food Panda riders. Last week I was invited sa grupo sa mga riders, actually yes, general man to. And nalansilay mga pipila sila mga concern. I know that kaning Food Panda is a private nga company and I also know na ang kaning problema dila ni sa Kageyan de Oro entire Philippines. Pero kanilang ang isa that we might kita sa LGU makatabang. Ah sam sa ilang mga, sa ilahang problema mga agis gutan is of course ang ilahang fair matrix. Natana, madyasan tungod kaya mahal na ang gasolina karoon. Insurance and healthcare package para sa riders kaya kung imong ono naon panahon sa pandemya kanyetong mga riders may nahimong mga heroes ba yan ato? And kung imong ono naon sila nasa kadalanan, maulan, mainit. Tausahay kung ma disgrasya pa ang ending, wala sila insurance. Also, ah, usah sa ilang mga problema, if ever na may tabo na something na may problema between sa Food Panda, ug sila na may mga suspension of termination pero wala yu process for them, kaya lagi sa app pa sila nagcommunicate. Ah, usahay napun sila 'yung mga national glitch sa ilang mga system. And usah silang problema kung app ang ilang buhaton magreklamo ang motubag sa ila, delete mga tao, kung delete robot, mga bot lang, mga automatic na mo reply. And ang, ang isa pa sa ilang concern is umsahan nila kung for example na sila gusto nila dipinsan ilang kaw galingon kung i terminate sila or kung nagi sila personal nga reklamo. That's why, Madam Chair, ah, sila nangayog tabang kanato, kung pwede ba, kung pwede ba sa ato lang dili sa LGU nga pwede ba tanabatay joint nga, for me lang ni, joint nga investigation between sa, sa Labor Unemployment Committee, Ang Labor Employment, Trade and Commerce and maybe sa atong public utilities? Natana, nagid sila own hub or office dini, na nagid mga tao na taga Food Panda yud. Para at least kung naiissue, if ever naman sila problema, nasa time masultiyan diretsa ug delete mga emails ug mga app ang atong ginagamit. Matulpan nila, when they started daw, I think, pagstart na nila Food Panda dili, na daw existing hub but after the pandemic, nawala na. So mosa na ilang, isa lang ilahang gusto nga kita po dili sa local government unit na to, mga makatabang nila. Pwede ba nga mahangyo na to or matawag na to ilahang kuwan, ang kumpanya? Na pwede ba ibalik na to ang ilahang own hub dili sa Kageyan de Oro? Kaya again, moragin ilang gusto, at least makadipinsa sila kung for example na termination na mureklamo sa app about sila at least na ay tao yud delete robot ug delete ang moagip pa sa app. Maulang ginam Madam Chair, ang ilang gusto may tabo and hopefully tanan na yun joint committee hearing ni Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Councillor Bernie Esparcia, any comment? Councillor Attorney James, Attorney Joey Abu.
Thank you, Madam Chair, good afternoon to everybody. I'd like to commend the special report of the reporter but I'm just talking about the legal aspect side of things, Madam Chair, no? As to the insurances, insurances ka ng mga kuwan po nila as mentioned, as well as establishing a officer it's more on a corporate prerogative on the part of Food Panda. And as to ilang imposition of matrix po, kung pila ang i-impose sa ilaha that's a corporate prerogative in which the LGU cannot even impose on it. But siguro ang prayer lang po sa reporter is that probably we can assist them in asking the, in asking the company to perhaps give these benefits and privileges to the drivers sa ilahang kumpanya. And if there are also legal issues regarding termination sa ilaha, if wala sila gitagahan ug yu process, it is with the Department of Labor and Employment, nga pwede siya po sila mo dangop ana. Not with, hindi sa ato dali, but again, ang ato lang mabuhat lang siguro is an investigation in aid of legislation and at the same time, as is the, the drivers of the Food Panda para pod madangop ang ilahang mga concerns o mga problema na dulu to sa kumpanya. And at least, at least that's the very least that we can do. But on the other aspects of, as to the matrix of payment, insurances, establishment of hubs, it is more on a corporate prerogative on the part of Food Panda. That would be all, Mr. Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Attorney Joey Abu, any more comment? Are we not, our function is overseer function? If we see that it's dim necessary to help them, why not? Even if they are a corporate, but then we are seeing them, in fact I'm seeing them every day, ulan. Na, nagpadaplin, naglingkon sa pungko sa daplin. We cannot allow that. Even if they are under a corporation for me ha? Because our function is to determine whether they are safe, they are paid, paid, what you call this? Fair, fairly? So, ang akong nakita sa pakakaroon is that wala'y kaw galingon na place and they just, even bisagasa mo, they will just sit somewhere, sa daplin sa kadalanan. I hope we can look into this matter, no? Kaya it's not fair that they are providing services to our Kageyanons and yet they were not given the chance also to be heard. And I hope this will be addressed to the committee. Yes, Councillor Michael Seno?
Thank you so much, Madam Presiding Officer. Vice Mayor Joseline Bebota Batista Rodriguez and of course to the 20th City Council. Happy birthday to my hermano, Councillor Roger Abadai. Happy, happy birthday. May Almighty bless you with what you wishes. And of course to our media friends, Felo Kageyanon, Smeng Hapon, ka natuntanan? A very good report, of course, Madam Presiding Officer, no? Kaya napaabot ang yangungo and I think it falls under in aid of legislation, no? Duha man ang functions sa members sa City Council. First is the oversight function and the second is in aid of legislation, no? Through an investigation on how can we deal this? First, mangutan na lang ko, Madam Presiding Officer, considering nga nag-operate sila dunis sa Kageyan de Oro just like grab, taxi, we issue this certificate interposing no objection, no? Kaya inkambya sila. Munay mangutan ako, kung basin na kaligtahan ba ka na ako, nakadto kung CR kung naka-issue ba tao yud certification interposing no objection sa kininga pag-operate nila sa Kageyan de Oro or naabatay jurisdiksyon, munay first na ko nga pangutan. Second, mayonin nga maisgutan, para pod nga ang atong concern sa ato ang mga kinibitahong mga Kageyanons nga nakaresip po dahan, nga usahay kining Food Pandas na to, pag mag-deliver sila, nakaiba yan, mingingon sila gawa kuy sukli ana. Naunsoon man na ni mo karoon, gawa may sukli, na di na lang suklian. Muna karoon ang pangutan na po na to, no? We hear the sentiments of the drivers, bat nanawon po na to dunis aspeto sa ato ang mga gamit of Food Panda, nga naapoy inana nga mga sitwasyon. Muna nga, morisulta dahiyon sa pagpangutan na, have we issue or is it necessary to issue a certificate interposing no objection for their operation here in the city of Kageyan de Oro? No, naaban na sila business permits? Ga-kulekta ba tag taxes ana sa ilaha? Siguro mo full na dito sa ways and means basin usapuninga pamaagin nga maka-inkampunta, no? Ang city. Munay akong mga pangutan na Madam Presiding Officer, nga gusto na ko masuta ang may balan in aid of legislation dito sa joint committee meeting as prayed by the good Councillor of First District. So that's my only prayer, Madam Presiding Officer, good afternoon.
Thank you very much, Councillor Michael Seno, yes, very true, no? I think this has to be referred to the committee so that we will know what happens. Okay, ratong panahon sa pandemya, but now we are in place. So we should check whether everything's in place with the owner, the operator of the Food Panda and the, the, the one who is delivering, ang ato ilang mga, ga-deliver sa pagkaon. So we should be, ano, sensitive on the needs of the riders, no? Of course, we also, we the corporate owner also. So yata, we should meet halfway and make it a point nga ang siyudad, na delete po na to mapasagdan po. They are employees of this corporation, so meaning nagitah, we check on them and we check both ways, owner and the employees. Okay, Councillor Edgar Cabanlas, please.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Tito Roger. Good afternoon to the media people who are present and the people Kageyan di Oro. Now, Madam Chair, I've been thinking about this for a long time. And in fact, I was thinking of commending these drivers. I think we should thank these drivers that they are of service to the people of Kageyan di Oro. Especially during COVID, that was two years. They serve us even during the wee hours of the morning, rain or shine. In other cities in the United States, we give them appreciation, certificate of appreciation for this extraordinary service transcending ordinary performance of delivery of things that you would like to buy. Now, yes, the report is good. There is this general welfare clause in the constitution, even in the 7262, the Local Government Code, that is the function of the local legislature to situate that everybody is giving his fair share under the sun. Kininga mga problema, usahay makita nimo, magtapok na sila di sa severe, ang uban dudus corner, ang uban ulan, ug init, wala sila kasilungan, usahay mag-ano sila, gutom, o niya napay, usahay binuangan pod ni sila, nae magurin, ya di kibayan, fake muna eh. You know, siya are victims of divagaries of life, kining atong mga antos in town. Samara ga punin mga angkas, kining mga, kining mga, kining mga, itawag na'tong balabal. Di man ta ka provide o public transport nga maayos. So we adapt, we run into these people, into this kind of transportation. And they are ready to serve us. Nating alay mga problema ginagmaine, mga reklamo ginagmaine, mga driver tingali uban nga gabinuangan sa ilang pasero, but that is not the general rule. The general rule is that these people are serving the people of Kageyan di Oro. And they deserve to be treated like people also. Taga na'to sila sa ilang masilungan. If the grab owners cannot provide them with, then let's give them terminals. Provide them with terminals where they can rest. Silo, dun na sila kasilungan kay, nga'to 'yung klima dini sa Pilipinas, siya piting initayod. Kung init, init, kung ulan, ulan di sa. So thank you very much, Madam Chair. We go to the committee level for investigation.
Thank you very much, Councilor Edgar Cabanlas. Yes, Councilor Gurly Balaba. The lady in red.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ay, o, Valentine's sa maday. Happy Valentine's sa tutanan. Dili'ta tama firing squad. Happy birthday, Sir Roger. Ako lang ni, additional lang, Madam Chair, no, sa giingon ni Councilor Cabanlas na nagid sila unta'y masilungan. Pero unta, dili lang for Food Panda or Grab delivery riders tanan nagamotor, naay unta sila mahunungan ba kay namamputay mga private individuals ang ilahang vehicles, kining motor lang. So kung magulan, naasi la't po 'yung mga silungan, dili lang mga riders o mga delivery riders. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilor Gurly Balaba. I understand that wala sila office. Is that possible, operating a business without an office? Grabby pod? Yeah, but then the farmer, they're okay because have their own car, arang-arang nila. But this rider, um makita nimo ulan nagpahipe sa daplin, onil nipungko sa kadalanan. So I want this, ano, I want this check, no? Why there is no hub for these riders? So we'll refer this to the committee on public utilities, ways and means, and? Labor, labor, yeah, ways and means? Trade and commerce, Councilor Go King and Councilor Gurly Balaba. Yes, Councilor Romeo Caliso. So, okay na. So let me recognize the Majority Floor Leader, Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. I also allowed the special report of Councilor Parsha for raising the issue on the plight of our people, particularly the riding motorists. Madam Presiding Officer, we are now at the offing of having a an environment that is geared towards a metropolitan city. In fact, the Philippine Development Plan has stipulated that it should be launched in 2025. And services, of course, in a metropolitan city should be available for and different sectors. And the families in particular are the main trust of the government to serve and dedicate its efforts towards the development and growth of the family. And it cannot be denied that pets among families are already part of the family. In fact, the dog of Kay, the cat of Carla are living within the quarters inside the house. And to all of us, whether we love a pet or we don't have, but we appreciate their existence for many different reasons. However, we hear complaints from the public who really would like to raise their pets according to the needs and requirement of raising a pet like a dog, but they could not afford when these dogs get sick. And true to the need, Madam Presiding Officer, there are clinics already here in our environment in Kageyan di Oro. In fact, Councilor J. Rua Pasqual has utilized this clinic, but only for Councilor J.'s capacity that can afford to use even for one day or overnight. Learning, for learning to stay overnight, Madam Presiding Officer. Learning, learning, because it's very expensive. And it goes with the boarding, it goes with the caring, and it goes with the use of the professionals such as a veterinarian or her help. So in other words, you have to pay all these fees and charges. In the city government, we have a functioning city veterinary office. And we also allowed the administration before and present, including the entire structure and personnel of our city vet, Madam Presiding Officer. In fact, there are many programs under this department, including dispersal, distribution of not only pets but for the productivity of our agriculture. But to pets that we consider as part of our family, we should think aloud beyond the basic services that the department is already serving and dispensing under the thrust of this organization. I am thinking that this department should expand its services. And maybe through the facilitation of the health committee and some oversights of some members of the council to check how we can capacitate and improve the services of this organization by having a clinic with full complement of vets, personnel. And we can manage that, Madam Presiding Officer. We even manage pila ng capacity na'to sa hospital, doc? For humans? 100 beds? And that's not the truth of the matter because that's beyond 100 beds already. Using the corridors and all in the facilities of the hospitals. How about the extended family members? Why not create an environment that is supposed to serve for sick pets? When I say pets, I don't want to be exclusive to dogs or cats, even ka ng pigs or piglets. They are already pets, Madam Presiding Officer. And how the government can provide and extend service and create a program on the matter, it would be creative for this organization the city vet can do and undertake, Madam Presiding Officer. As defined, in a clinical hospital environment, veterinarians work with large and small animals to evaluate animal's health, diagnose, and treat illnesses, provide routine preventive care, prescribe medication, and perform surgery. Katulun na siya ko nakaresip sa messenger ko nabay ato. Na surgeon, ni veterinarian. Ang tubag wala. Munapadi nagreact dayon si Councilor Balaba. Murag 20 ka mo kning iya. So I do not know with the Presiding Officer.
Actually, right now, my George, the Belgian is admitted.
Ano sa hospital?
Yeah, this is a very timely report. I was waiting for you to finish.
Tinod, tinod.
And expensive.
It's not personal for us, members of the council, Madam Presiding Officer, because somehow we can afford. But for those who cannot provide.
No, 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 it's not amount of afford, expensive.
Yes.
Really expensive. I'm counting the days till admitted last sa Monday until now. Muragasaka akong bill. It's like a person admitted. So it's really extra, ano na, extra mile na for me to spend so much.
That's true, Madam Presiding Officer. So I am proposing that we should create a clinic. In fact, if the regulations of the Department of Health and the veterinary department in the bureaucracy of the national and the local would allow, we should establish a hospital for pets, Madam Presiding Officer. So that's my proposal and maybe, hopefully, we can consider and at the proper time, we include that as part of the programs of the government. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is a very, very, very laudable report, no? Kay you know what, our, we consider them, our, ano, family. Once they're sick, then we get so worried. And then we get worried and we put them in the hospital, veterinary hospital, and then we are worried again of the expenses. Kay appeal man dextrose, the doctor and everything. So, kana, I wish and I hope that.
Nagwhisper dayon si ikaw, si Mr. Secretary, we should also include pet cemetery.
Ah, oh. Yes, I know, timely na yugkay na because I was thinking of my pet, no? Who is in the hospital right now. And mura banggut taga admit poduk tao because we're spending for the medicines and everything. So anyway, Councilor J. Pasqual, yes, you recognize?
Mayang hapon, Madam Chair, mayang hapon ka natontanan. Actually, ang akuna na siyang gistorya si Dr. Perla Assis regarding that na we should have a working veterinary office.
Yes.
And nag-suggest na me'antong magpalit na tao katong blood chem, katong para sa dugo, and then katu dayong sa katong murag x-ray o katu dayong para sa katong buntis, katong murag sa mammogram.
Ultrasounds?
Uh, ultrasound, ultrasound. So tuluto kabuo, tuluka machines among gusto na ipapalit adto. Kay para, dakumangguk kay siyang expense. Like ako, last time na hospital akong dog nagbayad gub 46 or 48,000. Muraging unana, kay appeal man ng anak niya. So actually, ang atong veterinary office nae capacity to magopera and to operate the machines, ang atong kulang is ang budget for the machine. So hopefully, basin ma-push through na ang katong giingon ni Councilor Majority Floor Leader Ian Mark Nakaya nga naatay working veterinary office. It would be great because our pets are naturally pets nga atong mauban-uban. But it is also a support, no, para sa atong mental health. Kay when I had COVID, bawal ang dog, pero ako gingidala kung dog. In kung akoanin yo, di ma-COVID mo appeal. Pero so, I mean, it was my darkest days because I was one of the first na na nag-COVID, wala, pay vaccine and everything. So gidala na ng nakua kung dog for support, so it really helped, no? So our pets are a part of our family, no? And it is also a part sa kanang mental health pod na'to nga makatabang sa ato. So kana lang, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Councilor J. Pasqual. Yes, Councilor Bernice Parsha.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nareremember na ko last year, Madam Chair. Nagpadala ko sa committee asking for the update kung di unsan na'to pag-implement sa mga laaw ng iro. Because isa sa atong nakakita, karoon, grabe mangyod ang mga iro pod karoon na nasa gawas. Now, una, munang nidagan ang nagpet karoon, kitu na ni mga artista nga ilang i-Instagram magabay-abay, nagawat-awat sagda, kay abilagin na'to cute. Number two, kung imuntan na akong karoon, kung magbuhi ka, even the veterinarians now mingingon say mo nga sir. Sa usabya, sa balay sir, dili biya pwede padaganay iro sir kay also bisag iro lang na, especially iro man ni akong gingingon. Napuni sila dapat time para sa owner, dili punin nga basta lang tamobuhay. Now, it's a very good proposal nga nagitay nga ni nga hospital. Pero siyempre, at the end of the day, ang masa napod, siyempre, unaw na nila. Mudi magay, mababayad sa mong kaw galingon, di kanipakamong iro. I don't know lang if we have a local ordinance ba on kaning pag-angkon mismo sa pet na dapat ba sila nai-control because lagi again, usahay cute tanawon ni mga iro. Ganahan ta, mobuhay mga iro. Pero usahay di na ta maka-afford, pasagdaan na ng dayon, igul na na tubahogan, pasagdaan. Takomakapak na ba, mudi na'y naraba dayon na sila ang tangiya. Kay makabayad, mangyod ka kumakapak ang iro, ana, then how many times na na'y mga aksidente nga makabanga? Ang iro nabangga ni, malintong, balik na buko sa riders, malintong. Tapos ang ending, mudi na'y dayon nga dili man ako ah, gabahog lang ko, pod dili na ako ah. I think usan na daan, so before ta magguapo ni nga na'y hospital, ato puni hugutan nga, let's be responsible also. Ngamatag pamilya, dili pwede nga magbuhi lang tag palaganay o pets pod. Dapat ato pong i-check nga, kaya ba na'to, muragay punibag, magluma-luma tag panganak u dagan, tagi-dita makapaiskuila. So the same guy pon sa pets, before ka magbuhi, kailangan imo sa ng tanawon kung kaya ba ni mo nabahogan kay may tanag, Councilor J. ka nga, kaya ni mo ang mga mahalo na mga dog food. Ang ending na'to ani, miskigaling ang iro, mureklamo na kay karibal napod nila dito sa dukot kay miski karoon ang dukot, kauno namang pod sa tangiya, so di na sila magakaon. Ang usahay, ang mabali pag yod, mas lamig pa ang kinaon sa iro kay sa tangiya. Maulang ginamadam chair.
Thank you very much, Councilor Bernice Parsha. I would like to ask whether the city vet office have enough space for this, ano, admitted nga mga atong pets?
Mayang hapon, ang ato ang kuwan, ang ato ang space dito sa city vet, ah sa laaw nga mga dogs? Iutanize man na sila. Yeah, pero ang, ang space na'to dito sa city vet, dakusha because ang katong portion sa CDRR sa una nga gagamit is wala naman nila nagamit. So, kana building is ang Boy Scout of the Philippines, Manasana Building. Abay gyod siya sa City Health, second floor. So, dako ang ilang space, but ang katunalang machines ang kulang.
Ah, okay. So, anyway, thank you very much, Councilor J. Pasqual. We will refer this to the Committee on Health. Councilor? Ah, dilili sa iba, Councilor. Kay, sa manay ni, agriculture, health manggud gapon god? Ah, I think both of you, huh? Agriculture gapon na, not the health? Ah, kay, diliman human being? Okay, refer to the Committee on Agriculture, Councilor J. Pasqual. Share ba usah? Wala nila? Of course, oh, of course.
May we inform Councilor Parsha that we have an ordinance already existing for the animal welfare ordinance? In fact, it's already a code. It's no law, it's, it's, it's not just an ordinary ordinance.
So, just need a budget for that?
But to the appeal for a hospital, a budgetary requirement is needed.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Ah, let us proceed, Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. We will proceed for the business of the day, items 1 to 4. Omnibus motion for the, they are with one subject matter. One, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 262, returning to the barangay council of barangay. Now in the city, it's ordinance number 2 series of 2023. Two, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 263, returning to the barangay council of barangay, number 19. The city, it's ordinance number 1 series of 2023. Three, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 264, returning to the barangay council of barangay patag. The city, it's ordinance number 1 dash 1 dash 2023. Four, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 265, returning to the barangay council of barangay Tignapuluan. The city, it's ordinance number 1 series of 2022, covering their respective annual budgets for calendar year 2023 with estimated incomes with the information that said ordinances are operative in their entirety. May we ask the chair to recognize Councilor Yan Lam Lim?
Councilor Yan Lam Lim, you recognize?
Madam Chair, mayanghapon, mayanghapon sa tanan ang kauban o happy birthday sa isa na tong kauban. Everything is in order. I move to approve proposed resolution number 2023 dash 262.
Second? Opat to opat?
Omnibus approval, proposed resolution number 2023 dash 264. 2023 dash 266. Ah, 2023 dash 265.
Any second? Any objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Number five is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 266, approving and/or adapting the health promotion framework strategy for 2023 in the citywide health system of the city of Cagayan de Oro, submitted by the City Health Office pursuant to administrative order number 2020 dash 42, dated September 11, 2020, of the Office of the Secretary of the Department of Health. May we ask the chair to recognize Councilor Maria Lourdes Esghani?
Councilor Lourdes, Councilor Lourdes Esghani, you recognize?
Mayanghapon, salamat, Madam Chair. I move for the approval of proposed resolution number 2023 dash 266.
Second, objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Six is proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 107, approving the simple subdivision plan of lot 7 block 7 PSD dash 25027 with an area of 112 square meters containing 5 lots located in barangay nasarit. This city is applied for by Ms. Ruby Lim Abrugar, subject to the conditions imposed by the City Engineers Office and the City Housing and Urban Development Department. May we ask the chair to recognize Councilor Edgar S. Cabanlas?
Councilor Edgar Cabanlas, you recognize? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Majority Floor Leader, move to approve the shared ordinance.
Any second? Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Number seven is proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 108, approving the simple subdivision plan of lot number 825 dash C dash 19, PSD dash 10 dash 028403 with an area of 92 square meters containing 3 lots located in barangay number 18. This city is as applied for by Mr. Tito El Daing Jr., subject to the conditions imposed by the City Engineers Office and the City Housing and Urban Development Department. Again, for the recognition of Councilor Edgar Cabanlas.
Councilor Edgar Cabanlas, you recognize? Councilor Attorney Joey Abu, you recognize?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Everything is in order. I move to for the approval of proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 108.
Any second? Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Number eight is proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 109, approving the alteration of plan of Fresno Park View subdivision project located in barangay Lumbia. The city particularly block 10, lot 19, block 1, lot 58, block 13, lot 2, block 8, lot numbers 8 to 12, block 1, lot 78, and road lot 13 for the provision of 2.0 meter alley road right of way for the use of the residence of Cityum Ayahai located at the back of the subdivision as applied for by the Robinsons Land Corporation, represented by its assistant branch manager Amparo Di Hamis, subject to the conditions imposed by the City Engineers Office and the City Housing and Urban Development Department. And for this purpose, amending ordinance number 11074 dash 2008 accordingly. Again, for the recognition of Councilor Jose Pepe Abu Jr.
Councilor Attorney Joey Abu, you recognize?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Everything is in order. I move for the approval proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 109.
Any second? Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, any objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Number nine is proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 110, approving the application, approving the development permit BP of the Cagayan de Oro Settlement and Socialized Housing Project 1 Phase 2B, Cedar Ship dash 1 P2B with an area of 89,704 square meters containing 74 lots under BP 220 located in barangay Canitoan. This city is applied for by the City Government of Cagayan de Oro, represented by Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uy, subject to the conditions imposed by the City Engineers Office and the City Housing and Urban Development. May we ask the chair to recognize Councilor Romeo V. Caliso?
Councilor Romeo Caliso? Yes, Councilor Edgar Cabanlas? Before, yeah, yeah, you're recor- I'm sorry, Councilor Romeo Caliso.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. There is a typographical error here in the area of the property involved. It says here 89,704, that is 8 hectares. Actually, the, actually, the real area here is only 0.89.
0.89?
0.89, that's 8,970 square meters.
Okay.
Because it's not congruent with the actual number of available lots, which is only 74.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not, it does not, it's not meet each other. It's only 0.89.
0.89? Okay, thank you very much, Councilor Edgar Cabanlas. So, okay, Councilor Romeo Caliso?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's not my birthday tomorrow. My buddy, Councilor Abaday, was looking at us with sharp eyes earlier. But anyway, happy birthday to my buddy, Councilor Roger Abaday. As corrected, Madam Chair, may I move for the approval of proposed ordinance 2023 dash 110?
Any second? Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried. As amended, no? 0.89?
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Number 10 is proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 111, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando A. Uy, representing the City Government of Cagayan de Oro as Doni to sign the deed of donation executed by the Monte Nissan Corporation as donor, represented by Mr. Marlo Ray Areola, channel development manager, covering the provisions of food items, 272 boxes of pancit canton under the terms and conditions stipulated in the deed of donation attached her to. May we ask the chair to recognize Councilor George Guking?
Councilor George Gukie, you recognize? Stop kapeing. Ikaw na, 11?
10, 10.
Oh, 10, 10, 10.
Mayanghapon, Madam Chair.
Where are you? Where have you been?
I lost my agenda, Madam Chair. So, first time in the history nawala basig na misplace.
In the golf course?
Basig na sa golf course, Godula. I see no problem on the proposed ordinance number 2023 dash 111. I move for the approval, Madam Chair.
Second?
Thank you.
Okay, manifestation, please, Councilor Evi Mano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon and to the members of the city council and to our media friends at here today. Good afternoon. Madam Chair, I would just like to make a manifestation, hopefully for the inclusion in today's agenda, a corollary resolution expressing the city's gratitude and appreciation to the Monte Nissan Corporation for its magnanimity in donating food items to the city and subject to styling, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor Evi Mano. Yes, let's proceed. Where are we?
Proper time.
Proper time, okay.
Depending motion is for the approval.
Okay, second? Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
For inclusion, we have items 11, 12, 13, and 14, 15, and additional one from Councilor Evi Mano. 15? Okay. Move for their inclusion, Madam Presiding Officer.
Any second? Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
11 is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 267, expressing the 20th City Council's unequivocal stand for the exclusion of agricultural lands and the utilization of natural resources from the proposal in Congress allowing 100% foreign ownership of real property in the country. Move for its approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
Any second? Any objection? Counselor Attorney James Judit, yes?
Say, Madam Chair.
Objection?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ah, no, ang nala ko i-ikasulti kabahin sa kining, sa number 11, sa atong inclusion, sa atong agenda. Ah, nakadilim magunitiaw, Madam Chair. So, ang akounta i-repressan na to sa proper committee kay nasayod man siguro ta nga naapoylaraw ang atong kasamtangan nga administrasyon kabahin sa pag-aminda sa atong batakang balao. Ung ya gibutang manggudini diretso na ta nga na ay pagsupak unequivocal stand for the exclusion of agricultural lands and the utilization of natural resources from the proposal in Congress allowing 100% ownership, foreign ownership of real property in the country. Kinalan madunggan po na to ang mga, nag-apektado ng mga sektor ni ini. Dilini siya tiaw, Madam Chair. Ung ya, wamasa ta nakadungog pa sa ilaw, pa man ko inadunggan nga ni Agni sa public consultation. So, kung mahimo lang, dilis na na to ni Bali Tukion sa pagkakaroon, mamilaw sa ta. Kung mahimo lang, Majority Floor Leader, para atong masintensize, kung unsa mga yangu-ungo sa sa uban, unsa padangilang komentario, kabahin ni ini ng issue. Kay, dilini siya tiaw ng issue, Madam Chair. Labina kabahin ni Majority Floor Leader sa unsa atong kay moon karoon sa atong batakang balao.
Yes, Counselor?
I, I have no objection to the proposed referral to the committee concerned, Madam Presiding Officer. But to me and to the minds of the proponents, Councilor Pasqual and this representation, it's very clear that agricultural lands should not be included in the discussion. It should not be allowed to be owned by foreigners. They can, foreigners can own for economic purposes and upliftment of our economy. The industries where there are corporations that Filipinos can compete against foreigners. But for Filipino people in the margin, like the farmers, who cannot compete with the foreigners, they should not be allowed in one turni for just, for the sake of economic prosperity. And I would like to take the cue of Councilor James Judit so that the committee concerned can address the proposal. But again, let me restate that it's very clear in my mind as the proponent that now and forever Philippine agricultural land should remain to the Filipino farmers. But as requested, move for the referral of the matter to the Committee on Agriculture.
Okay, thank you very much. Actually, this is a very nationalist provision, diwala? Being a Filipino, niyo on the land, sige lang, no comment lang sa ko. Anyway, so we will refer this to the Committee on Agriculture?
Agri, yes.
With Councilor J. Pasqual, right? Okay, any second? Any objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Number 12 is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 268, earnestly requesting the Center of Inclusive Development Studies, CIDS, of the University of Science and Technology of Southern Philippines, USTP, system through its president, Dr. Ambrosio B. Cultura II, to conduct the following research studies: A, status and assessment of water sanitation and hygiene, Wash, program of public schools, basis for policy recommendations, and gender-based community impact assessment of displaced household in Cagayan de Oro City due to river basin's flood risk infrastructure project. Move for its approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
Any second? Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second and final reading.
Second, objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Um, magyapon ngaalan sa 13, oh? Number 13 is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 269, electing Councilor Malvern A. Parsha as additional member of the Committee on Games and Amusement, amending for the purpose Resolution Number 14200 dash 2022 of the 20th City Council Committee Composition. Proponent, Councilor Roger G. Abaday.
Councilor Roger Abaday, are you sure?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
That's a good question.
My colleagues.
Yes, are you sure? This is a very ano ha?
Because of the persistent request with bindedness, I give my benevolence to the Councilor Malvern Parsha as a member of the Games.
Any second? Any objection? Objection?
Pareha di sa katong komitin ako, ludlue gapon. Marera, pareha.
Ano mangyod sa may naka-interes ni mga na, Councilor Malvern? Anyway, any objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Any second? Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Number 14 is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 270, expressing once more the city's gratitude and appreciation to Mr. Anthony Wawi. Diba, diba, diba limatukai? Obsum for donating to the City Government of Cagayan de Oro another 40 units of 2-way handheld radio and 20 units to reflecturize traffic vest with chargeable light for use of the roads and traffic administration, RTA, subject to styling. Proponent, Councilor Roger G. Abaday. Move for its approval, Madam Presiding Officer.
Councilor Roger Abaday, you recognize?
Again, with very exemplary generosity of this person, Anthony Obsum, because this is the second time already donated.
A third?
A third time, this is the third time. So, I move to approve this resolution, recognizing this generosity of Anthony.
So, I move to approve this resolution, recognizing this generosity of Anthony Wawi Obsuma.
Murasa check si Wawi ba? Anyway, and it's, huh? Wawi man, huh? Anyway, any, any second? Objection, I hear none, most, yes? Okay, okay, Counselor Attorney James Judith?
Pero sa kalambagan lang kay, ikatulo or ikaupat na ba ni nga hugna sa iyang pagdonar? Ay, katulo. Gusto lang ako tataon vice, unsa ni kani, iyan ni personal or easy representing? Kani nagrepresentar ba siya o sa kapundo, o sa ka grupo? Or personal lang ginni niyang inititibong pagkata. Gusto lang ako kalambagan.
I think personal, because he is not, ano, mentioning any names.
So, he's a pilantrist?
Yes, pilantrist.
This is actually personal, coming from his own pocket.
Oh, so, this is his third time?
Ah, parabase sa'yo mong birthday. Ah, so, sana all lugar dini ni Mr. Obsuma?
Yes.
Malak, gusto lang ako klarohan kay, ikadili tiaw ang niyang, basta, ayang hipang donar, balisa atong dakbayan. So, matong klarohan ko lang kay, unsa man, unsa dini siya, unsa iyang plano day para sa dakbayan. Sana all.
Ano man, dini, nalagay diri, takadonate? Anyway, let us proceed, dahan ako, nawala ako. Any second? Objection, I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
And second, an objection, I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Next donation, siguro niya, ato i-present gini, atobangan.
Oo, dili, magpasalamat na ta. Sayang, tubangan, ibitahon na na to.
Di, ay, isa, para makadonate pa. Sa sunod pa man, sa sunod pa man, ang fourth pa, ang fourth. Sa fourth na, anyway, kaya man na niya, diwa, diwa? Ah, kaya niya, sa fourth, ato i-invite. So, dagan-dagan na.
Invite na na to, pasalamat na ta, katulo na na.
Move to approve second final reading.
Ymua na to plaque ba? Oo, ito, that is a very, ano, noble cost, donate. Anyway, second?
Para dagan magsunod.
Basin di ba, dagan magsunod po, o sige. Uh, where are, where am I? Second, an objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Okay, so, all the comments, maybe the secretary can take note para...
Ayos sa, ayos sa, napami fourth and fifth.
Fourth donation sa.
Ung minaw ka karoon, Wawi.
Ay, you can address, the Presiding Officer can address.
Yeah, thank you very much, ah, Wawi, we're here thanking you. Wawi Obsuma, we're here thanking you for your donation, ah, some more to come.
Ay, apol, buhay pa na.
Buhay pa, uy.
Naguna una siyo ka taga-gusa na siya ba, o taga-tablun, nga, nae-planos politika. Taga pala ka, moragula.
Number fifteen, Madam Presiding Officer, is proposed resolution number 2023 dash two seven one, expressing the city's gratitude and appreciation to Mondi Nisin Corporation for donating to the City Government food items, subject to styling. The proponent is Counselor Yevony Yeseni B. Imano.
Okay, Counselor Evi Mano, tanga ansan mo tataonin kung ano, eh? Kaning, dili, kuwan man eh, pancit canton man eh, malunggay, diba? Ah, dili. No, kalam pancit libor?
Spicy. Spicy.
Panawaga.
Ah, I move for the approval of proposed resolution number two, two zero two three dash two seven one, Madam Chair.
Any second? Objection, I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second, objection, I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Sa sunod na lang po ng donation, ato imbitarun.
O, kana sila anduha.
Sa sunod, sa sunod na.
Magdala sila, pancit.
Ah, ato lang ang ini tubig.
Move to approve second final reading.
Any second? An objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
There being no pending, Madam Presiding Officer, move to adjourn.
Uh, session adjourn, may hapon sa tanan. Counselor Roger, lisak, kani mong cake, iulit dayon diretso.
Happy birthday, ah, happy, happy, happy birthday, na. Dagad, kapaw tawag, dagan gasya, salabaw, magkagagahop, kuya Roger Abaday. Happy, happy. Iya, pado ang pili mani, mone yang idad. Kumpila kaman yang nasake, mone idad, niko ya Roger.